Those members of the public who don't know me, I'm Marcy Spoiler, Spoiler, the deputy moderator, and I will now call the regular Monday, June 26, 2023, RTM meeting to order. Can the clerk take the roll?
Ed Bateson.
Here.
Marty Fury.
Here.
Melissa Longo.
Here.
Amy Ruggero.
Here.
Bill Gerber.
Here.
Karen McCormick.
Here.
Cindy Perham.
Here.
Jeff Steele.
Here.
Alex Durrell.
Here.
Jeff Galdenzi.
Here.
Tom Lambert.
Here.
Sharon Pistilli.
Here.
Laura Carson.
Here.
Michelle McCabe.
Here.
Marcy Spoiler.
Here.
Liz Esma.
Here.
Jennifer Barahona. Josh Garskoff. Joe Seibert.
Here.
Jay Walk. Steve Barrettts.
Here.
Hannah Gale. Andy Graceffa.
Here.
Lisa Havy.
Yeah.
John Keown.
Here.
Mark McDermott. Jill Vergara.
Here.
Karen Wackerman.
Here.
Cameron Cheniski. Hank Ferentz.
Here.
Jim Myers.
Here.
Mr. Myers, do you have an announcement to make in your district?
Jim Myers, District 8. I'd like to introduce and welcome back Nick Morabli. Nick was voted into District 8.
Welcome. Nick Morabli.
Here.
Christine Brown. Drew Giorgiades. Margaret Horton. Kelly Sinto.
Here.
Ken Astorita.
Here.
Peter Britton.
Here.
Brooke Sparachino.
Here.
Stolly Tolan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll go to item number two, to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 22, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve Representative Perham, seconded by Representative Carson? Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. We move on to item number three, to appoint Representative Jeff Steele to serve on the Special Legislative Management Committee, filling the vacancy created by the resignation of Pam Iaccone. Do I have a motion to approve Representative Seibert, seconded by Representative Bateson? Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Welcome back Representative Steele. Moving on to item number four, we heard the assessor's report at our committee meeting, so that's not a voting item. We'll move on to Representative, or to item number five, to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments to the Harbor Management Committee as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Jeffrey S. Warren, unaffiliated, 330 Parkwood Road, term November 2021 to 2023, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Samuel Cargill. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Myers. Is Mr. Warren here? He wasn't here last week.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, great. Mr. Warren, if you want to just give us a little overview of why you, how you heard about this and what your interest is in this committee?
Yes, well, I've served as an alternate for the past year, so I've got a chance to see all the work that the Harbor Management Commission does, and just want to help out. I have a kind of a strong interest in waterfront activities in Fairfield, and I guess that's about it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Is there any questions, discussions regarding this? Seeing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number six, to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment of an alternate to the Harbor Management Committee as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, George O. Harris, Republican, 95 Orchard Hill Lane, term November 2021 to 2023, to fill the vacancy created by Jeffrey Warren. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Wackerman. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That looks like to carry unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Harris. I don't know if he's online. He was here last week. Number seven is no longer on our agenda. We will vote on the Ethics Commission at our August meeting. That requires 10 days from the Board of Selectmen vote, so we do not qualify for that, to vote at that, at this time. Moving on to item number eight, to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments to the Fair TV Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, Paul R. Foley, Republican, 175 Old Spring Road, term July 2023 to 2026, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Anna Marie Lagnese, Republican, Lee G. Camlet, Democrat, 726 Beach Road, term July 2023 to 2026, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mark Joyella, Democrat. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Wackerman, seconded by Representative Esma. Is Mr. Foley here today? Is anyone able to see if Mr. Foley is online? Seeing Mr. Foley is not here, Mr. Camlet was here yesterday. Do I have any discussion on this matter? Representative Pistilli.
Ms. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that we split the motion for each of the candidates.
So the motion is to separate Paul, Paul R. Foley from Lee G. Camlet. Do I have a second? Representative McCabe, any discussion on this? Is there any discussion online? I can't see the comments from here. Okay, seeing none, let's all vote on the amendment to separate the vote for those Representative, or for Paul R. Foley and Lee G. Camlet. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? That amendment carries unanimously, so now we will carry, we will consider separately the Paul R. Foley for the appointment. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Pistilli, second. Representative Wackerman. Any discussion regarding this?
I just look forward to hearing from Mr. Foley, and I really appreciate him volunteering to serve, but I'll be abstaining because I'd like to hear from him.
Is there any other discussion regarding Mr. Foley? Representative Bateson.
Ed Bateson, District 1. I'll be abstaining also until we hear from Mr. Foley.
Thank you, Representative Bateson. Any other discussion or conversation regarding this? Representative Wackerman? Okay, Representative McCabe.
Representative McCabe, District 4. Is it possible to make a motion to postpone on the vote for Mr. Foley until we have an opportunity to hear from him?
We could postpone to a date certain, August 28, which is our next regular meeting of the RTM. Is that the motion you'd like to make, Representative McCabe?
Yes.
Wonderful. Do I have a second? Representative Vergario, any discussion on this? Seeing none, let's vote on the motion to postpone to the date certain of August 28, our next regular meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Representative Wackerman, or Representative McCormick? Any abstentions? So that motion passes, how many members do we have here? 33, 1, 0. So that will be on our August agenda. Moving on to Lee G. Camlet, do I have a motion to approve? Representative Brown, seconded by Representative Carson. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor of Lee G. Camlet say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I'm not sure if he's online. This week, he was there last week, but thank you for your service. Moving on to item number nine, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that the application received under the Neighborhood Assistance Act, NAA, program are hereby approved, and that the Director of Community and Economic Development is hereby designated as the municipal liaison of the town of Fairfield for this program. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Wackerman, seconded by Representative Vergara. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none online or anywhere in the body, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? I can't tell, is that someone online that was opposed? I don't think so. Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 10, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolve that the program year 49, October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024, Community Development Block Grant, CD BG Annual Action Plan B, and hereby is approved in the amount of $537,000, which includes entitlement grant funds of $492,327 and program income of $44,673. And further resolve that Brenda L. Cupcheck, First Select Woman of the Town of Fairfield, be and hereby is authorized to execute any and all necessary documents to facilitate the town's receipt of these funds and participation in said CD BG program. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Vergario, seconded by Representative Carson. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 11, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. To consider and act upon the attached resolution recommended by the Board of Selectmen between the Town of Fairfield and the South Central Regional Water Authority to confirm participation in the Regional Household Waste Collection Center. Along with amendment to include a cap on DPW spending of $63,107 and with invoicing to be fully placed on a two-part formula, the expense cap for the FY '24 is $63,107. Should the service cost more than this, DPW must come back to the Board of Selectmen for approval. We need to make an amendment on this. Well, first, do I have an emotion to approve? Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Britton. I need discussion on this motion.
Representative McCabe, District 4. Based on the actual language that was approved by the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to make an amendment to the language proposed here, and for it to read, quote, "to consider and act upon the attached resolution recommended by the Board of Selectmen between the Town of Fairfield and the South Central Regional Water Authority to confirm participation in the Regional Household Waste Collection Center," and end it there, please.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Representative Pistilli, any discussion on this? Seeing none, we're going to make the amendment to vote, or we're going to vote on the amendment. Do I need to repeat it? No? Yes? Okay. So the amendment is to consider and act upon the attached resolution recommended by the Board of Selectmen between the Town of Fairfield and the South Central Regional Water Authority to confirm participation in the Regional Household Waste Collection Center, period. It ends there. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns before we take this to a vote? Okay. All those in favor, oh, Representative Astoria.
Ken Astorita, District 10. And I apologize because I was not at the meeting last week, but could you just explain the rationale for eliminating, eliminating the spending cap of 63, $63,000?
I believe they did that at the Board of Selectmen.
They did, okay.
Meeting, so I was just told from the moderator that we needed to make that amendment.
Perfect, okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let's make a vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. So now we're going to vote on the amended motion. So do you, would you like me to read that again, Representative McCormick or anyone? Okay, thank you. We're now going to vote, are we all, any discussion on the amended emotion? Seeing none, let's take that to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 12, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolve that the bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $2,377,000 for the purchase of vehicles and equipment for the Department of Public Works and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be and hereby is approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Wackerman, a second. Vergario, Representative Vergario, thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, let's take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number 13, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolve that $148,000 be and hereby is appropriated for the costs related to use of Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Representative Wackerman, seconded by Representative Pistilli, thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 14, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolve that funding of up to $70,000 for the WPCA fund balance for the purchase of an Influent Building Transformer be and hereby is approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Perham, seconded by Representative Myers. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolve that funding of up to $125,000 from the WPCA fund balance for the purchase of a trailer-mounted generator be and hereby is approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Wackerman, seconded by Representative Ferentz. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Moving, moving on to item number 16, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Yes, I appreciate that. I'm sorry, do I need a second for that? No, great, thank you. All right, so the item is waived. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Vergara, seconded by Representative Pistilli. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. All right, now we move to item number 17, to consider and act upon a fair rent commission ordinance sponsored by Tom Lambert, District 3, Laura Carson, District 4, Michelle McCabe, District 4, Karen Wackerman, District 7, and Margaret Horton, District 9. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Wackerman, seconded by Representative Barrettts. Any discussion on this?
Karen McCormick, District 2. Boy, they really aren't saving our lower backs over here. Can't we spare a podium a little higher up? Can we have that in the budget for next year? For those who did not have the benefit of either watching, listening, or being here last week, we had extensive discussions about the Fair Housing Commission. And while I'm certainly mindful of the fact that we are under the auspices of the state legislature on much of what has been proposed in this town ordinance, there are many reasons why I have concerns about the potential weaponization of this ordinance against landlords. And specifically, I'm just not, I'm not going to go over all the points that I made last week, but basically, I'm very concerned about the impact on landlords and the free-market economy that dictates what landlords can charge for rent. I'm also concerned about the makeup of the commission and making sure that if something is going to be found to be unconscionable, that seems to me to tell all of us that it should be pretty obvious to everybody on the commission that it's unconscionable. And for all of those reasons, I'm going to make a motion that the ordinance as proposed be amended at Section 5, the section that deals with rent reduction orders, order and repairs, subsections B and C, to insert the following language, "if the commission determines, comma, with four out of five commissioners concurring after a hearing that the rental charge or proposed increase in the rental charge for any housing accommodation is so excessive." So essentially, I'm making a motion that the ordinance be amended to require a four out of five vote of the commission in order to make any affirmative findings. Thank you.
Are you changing, amending Section 5B and C at this point?
Yes, the amendment goes to 5B and C. I've given copies to the clerk and to the moderator, and that language, "with four out of five commissioners concurring," she'll be, the amendment proposal is that that be inserted in both subsections B and C of Section 5.
So the amendment is to add in, comma, "with four out of five commissioners concurring" in both Section 5B and Section 5C after, if the commission determines. Do I have a second? Representative Bateson, do I have discussion on this amendment? Representative Pistilli?
Sharon Pistilli, District 3. For the record, this microphone is perfectly placed. Through you, Madam Moderator, to Representative Wackerman, I was wondering if you could let us know which other towns require supermajority on their fair rent commissions, if you have that information.
Karen Wackerman, District 7. To the best of my knowledge, the only town that has that provision is the city of Stratford, and there are many towns that have had this fair rent commission in place before the amendment that required larger towns to create one. And to my knowledge, none of them have felt the need to change the vote from a simple majority to a supermajority.
Thank you, Representative Wackerman. You have an additional question?
Thank you. Is it okay if I have a follow-up? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Representative.
And through you, Madam Moderator, to Representative Wackerman, is the commission for the town of Stratford, is that a newer commission or is that a well-established one? So they're the only ones with a supermajority. Is it a longstanding situation or is it recent?
Good question. It's a recent one. It was just in the press a couple months ago, just passed.
Thank you. Any other? Representative Longo? You had your hand up? You can go, yeah. I think we're going to just, yeah, you can just pick it up. Yeah, yeah. Did you, did you want to go up and speak? Okay, great, thank you. By the way, just to remind Representatives and members of the public in the chat, if you could comment in the chat, we can't see everybody necessarily all the time, so if you raise your hand, that necessarily won't get noticed, so if you could just comment in the chat, we're taking comment from members of the body at this time, but we will go to the public afterwards.
Thank you, Liz Esma, District 4. I know I look ridiculous, but this is a great workaround. So a couple of things, and Representative McCormick, I don't know if I heard you correctly, so I'm happy to be corrected. I think you said that anything egregious would be obvious to all the members of the commission, in which case there would be absolutely no need for a supermajority. I also think in terms of market, you know, the commission's not going to create their own supply and demand model. There is a market out there, and that can be easily obtained, and we can compare whether it's a rent increase or a rent, whether or not it's within the market. So I don't know how landlords are disadvantaged by this. It's no different than how the real estate market works. Other things that are driven by markets, supply and demand, so I think it's, I think all the protections are there that are needed, and it can easily be established what is fair, what is egregious, and where the commission feels they need to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Esma. Representative McCormick, you can respond.
Yes, if I may briefly respond, the point being that if it's unconscionable and egregious, it should be very easy to get for it should be very easy to get four out of five members to concur with that. But it shouldn't be determined lightly, it should be an absolute mandate from the commission, and that will be required if four out of five members are voting for it. Additionally, the fair market component of this ordinance is only one of 13 factors that the commission can consider. The fair market value, in my opinion, is a nonstarter. Like, a landlord cannot be prohibited legally from collecting fair market value rent, in my opinion. That, to me, just seems unconstitutional and a taking by the state. But that aside, the real issue here is all the other factors that can be taken into account. I gave the example of a tenant living down on Fairfield Beach Road. And despite the claims to the contrary, these, this ordinance is going to apply not only to rental increases but rental charges. So somebody applying to be a tenant in a landlord's property, if they don't think that they've been treated fairly in terms of the initial rent that the landlord wants to charge, they can file a complaint with this commission. And they can pursue all sorts of remedies through this commission, including appeals to the Superior Court, et cetera. So there's a lot riding on this for everybody involved. But when you're going to take away property from somebody, it really needs to be a mandate by the commission. And we have that here on the Zoning Board of Appeals. There is a requirement under the Zoning Board of Appeals that there be a majority, a supermajority vote of the commission to, in order to deny somebody's appeal. And, you know, there's many more factors that are taken into account other than fair market value, so, including the income of the tenant. So if a tenant down on Fairfield Beach Road loses their Wall Street job, and they can no longer afford to pay $15,000 a month, that could be determined by a commission that was made up of three people that agreed with that person, that that was unconscionable. And therefore, under the basic destruction of this person's livelihood and income, they could be found to be, have a rental charge or a rental increase or what have you, that's considered unconscionable. And for all those reasons, I think we need to be very, very careful in handing out the remedy for something that is considered an unconscionable rental charge or rental increase.
Thank you, Representative McCormick. Any other comments from the body?
Ed Bateson, District 1. I think this amendment is reasonable. In light, full disclosure, I'm a landlord. In light of what could possibly happen, I think this is reasonable to ask a supermajority of the commission to concur. I mean, it's not just fair rent. There's a multitude of other things that we're, we are now open up to that will be, you know, arbitrage at this level, which quite frankly, has never been at this level. I mean, having done this for years, I recognize the authority of a judge when I go to housing court. I've always accepted that. This new forum is going to hold things up. I mean, to landlords that are going, you know, month to month, carrying mortgages and, you know, trying to balance the needs of their tenants and so forth, you're putting an enormous stress on the system. And I think that, while I don't agree with it overall, I think this will give me some measure of confidence that any decision that is arrived at by the committee, at least I'll feel better that, okay, it was four out of five. Maybe I am doing something wrong. Maybe this is warranted. Maybe I need to move faster to get things done. So I think it's a reasonable request, and I ask you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Bateson. Any other comments?
Representative McCabe, District IV. I wanted to just state for the record, I will not be voting in favor of this amendment, although I appreciate the concern that was expressed. First, I do want to clarify some misinformation that was shared. First, there's no property that's being taken away in this situation. Second, the incident of a prospective renter, people who are looking to rent a place are not covered by the Fair Rent Commission. This is for people that are already renting and are faced with a rent increase. Also does not apply to people that suddenly lose their job and now can no longer afford to pay the rent. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that those are circumstances that this Fair Rent Commission don't consider. I also want to add that we did, after hearing concern about the number of people on the commission and the request for a supermajority thought through, and realized that when you only have a commission that seats five people, that it is a very high bar to have to have five out of the, or four out of the five. And so we felt that that was going to make it an inefficient and ineffective commission. Plus, we were supported by the fact that the fair rent commissions that are in existence and have been in existence for a very long time operate off of a simple majority and have not experienced any problems or any unfairness. And then finally, the Fair Rent Commission, their word is not absolutely final. If there's any dispute, it can actually be brought before a judge. And so if there is an instance where the Fair Rent Commission potentially is acting in a way that is disputable, that that can be brought before the court and the court can decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCabe.
Thank you, Liz Zesma, District IV, and thank you, Representative McCabe. You answered one of my questions, but I want to give the sponsor of the amendment a chance to also answer because I can't vote on a hypothetical. Is there any, are there any incidents? Is there any data? Is there anything in your research to suggest, since we have commissions in the state of Connecticut that have been in place for a long time, that any particular incident raises your concern? I appreciate Representative McCabe saying so, but I would also like to hear from the sponsor of the amendment. I'm probably not going to vote for it, but I just think it's only fair when you're asking people to vote on hypotheticals, that you can possibly bring us some hard data. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Zesma.
Karen McCormick, District II. I don't have data, but what I do have is, I do have our eyeballs and a brain, and I'm an attorney. And I've read the ordinance, I can read what it says, I understand it, and I'm looking at the plain language of the ordinance. And based upon the plain language of the ordinance, I don't need to have data. I just need to have words on a paper that's going to be used to enforce against people. And when people talk about, you know, there's no taking of property here, well, I beg to differ with you. I mean, if your definition of taking of property is that the government's going to come in and see somebody's house, I would agree with you. It's not a taking of property. But anytime you infringe upon the free market and the ability of a landlord to collect what they believe to be a fair market rent, it's absolutely a taking. But to Representative Zesma's point, I don't need data. I have eyes, and as I said, I have a brain. Thank you.
May I have a follow-up?
Go ahead, Representative.
So I've spent the last 43 years in the commodities market, and that's all about economics, markets, free markets, not-so-free markets. The free market is going to have the final say on this. Nobody is going to be brought in front of, you know, a judge and run out of town if there isn't, you know, demonstrable proof that they are charging an egregious rent. As far as, you know, the example of somebody on Wall Street, you know, people much lower on the economic scale than that get evicted when they lose their jobs. That is the mechanism for which a landlord has recourse against the inability to collect rent. So I'm sorry, I appreciate the time and the information. I will not be supporting this amendment.
Ed Bateson, District 1. I disagree with Representative McCabe's assertion about, you know, taking. I do consider this as a taking, and I'll give you an example. Let's say, you know, market, market forces have changed, and now my rental unit goes from the value, what I can charge, goes from $2,000 to $2,400. And I raise the rent to $2,400, and bang, I've got a new ordinance. And now I'm before this commission, and this commission says, oh, Ed, that's unreasonable. Now, you guys are all assuming that the commission's going to do the right thing. I hate government. I know government, I just assume government's always going to do the wrong thing, so I want to protect myself against it. So that's why I'm asking for this amendment. So now I'm out the $400 a month. I consider that a taking. So let's not assume that the commission will always do the right thing, because there's always going to be people out there like myself who's going to assume that they're doing the wrong thing in light of the free market, which is what we should be abiding by. Thank you.
Sharon Pastilli, District III. So I have been a landlord in the past, I'm not currently. But the, if the rent goes up from $2,000 to $2,400, then the market value and the data behind the market is going to show that that's market rent.
Laura Carson, District IV. Yes, I agree that the $400 does not sound unconscionable, so I do not think they would be voting against you. And you hate government, but government is just people. There are people on the commission, one being a landlord and one being a tenant, and others, maybe someone else would be a landlord. They're not out to get you, and you seem like a good guy. It's not out to get the good landlords, okay? There are plenty of good landlords. It's for the unconscionable. And you need, there's nothing in the state's legislation that caps rental increases. There's nothing. Like, New York City, they have caps. So they have no recourse, these people. So we're just looking out, and we're looking, trying to be fair. I never hear you mention the other side, the tenant, that you ever show any concern for someone whose rent has been increased unconscionably. What do you do about them? They'll go to, they have a place to go now, a court, I mean, a fair rent commission. And that's, let them decide. It is not looking to put you out of business, okay? And I do not believe there's going to be a swarm of people. We have not seen any data with all the different fair rent commissions that have been established over the years, there hasn't been a large swath of people running to the, to the commissions to take out the landlord. So we're just asking, we've worked really hard just to, you know, this is a mandate on us. We have to pass this by July 1st. And right now, there says there is nothing that will, there are no sanctions against us right now, but according to the guidance that we received, they said that the Attorney General may compel us to go forth with creating one, or according to the logistics, the demographics of what the legislature will be next year, they may decide to add sanctions to the Fair Rent Commission if it's not established. So we feel compelled to make, to create this commission by July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Carson.
Thank you. Anna Gao, District 6. I raised the question at the end of the meeting last week, but we were, it was very late. And I was asking about time constraints on this. And I see that there is the 14 days there, but it's at the conclusion of the investigation.
I'm sorry, Representative Gao, is this regarding the amendment for four out of five people?
It is, yes, because it pertains to it. Because there is not written into the, the proposed legislation enough of a time constraint, then I am afraid that this could, in fact, be used by people to simply delay paying the extra rent. If there's no time limit as written in how long, you know, it's going to take to gather data, obviously, no two units are exactly the same, you know, so you can, you can come up with comparisons and they can come up with comparisons, it could go on for a very long time. And that $400 could stay out of the pocket where rightfully should be for a very long time. So I just ask, in the light of that, to reconsider Representative McCormick's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Astorita, District 10. I'm not an entomologist, but egregious and unconscionable are powerful words, and they're powerful for a reason. So my expectation is really every decision that this commission makes is going to be five, nothing, for that very reason. So I think making a concession to have a supermajority of four out of five, I think, is extremely reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just would like to go back to the comments made earlier about, that this doesn't apply to prospective tenants. And I would ask Representative McCabe to point to an authority in the ordinance where it does not apply. Show us.
Representative McCabe? Okay. While Representative McCabe is looking that up, is there any other members of the body that want to speak? I only see one member of the public online. Representative McCormick, are you okay if I go to the public and come back to the body? Or would you like me to wait till Representative McCabe? If I was a moderator, I'd be singing a James Taylor song, but you just stuck with Yes, Representative McCormick?
At this juncture, given the length of time that it's taken, I would just suggest that if you're going to come up to the podium and make such an assertion, you should have, you're, you should be prepared to back that up with actual citations when you're called on it. I'll withdraw the comment for now, thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCormick. Any other members of the public want to speak right now? I mean, I'm sorry, members of the body want to speak right now? I apologize. Seeing no members of the body, I see that there's a member online, Wanda, see if you would like to speak regarding this motion, so that... like to speak regarding this motion. So the motion right now is, or amendment, is to, for four out of five people. So if it's not regarding the amendment, when we get back to the initial motion, then we can call on you at that time.
It is regarding the amendment.
It's regarding the amendment for four out of five people? Not, not the original, we have a, we have a amendment on the floor to change the wording in the motion. So the current amendment is to determine that the commission needs four out of five commissioners concurring to make a decision versus a simple majority, which is presently in the language. Is your comment regarding the motion, or the amendment, not the initial motion?
I'm talking about the original resolution, not the amendment.
Yep. Unfortunately, right now, we're talking about an amendment, but when we go back to the initial motion, I will ask for public comment then as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other members of the public here want to speak about Representative McCormick's motion, or amendment? Seeing none, we'll go back to the body. Any other further discussion on Representative McCormick's amendment to have four out of five commissioners concurring? Seeing none, would anyone like me to repeat any of this, or does everyone understand that the major change is with four out of five commissioners concurring versus a simple majority? Seeing none, we're going to take this amendment to a vote. So now we are voting on the amendment of having four out of five commissioners concurring, made by Representative McCormick. All those in favor, say aye. Betsy, do you want me to do a roll call vote? Okay, our clerk will do a roll call vote. Ed Bateson? Marty Fury? Melissa Longo? Amy Ruggero? Bill Gerber? Karen McCormick? Cindy Perrom? Jeff Steele? Alex Durrell? Jeff Galdenzi?
No.
Tom Lambert?
No.
Sharon Pastili? Laura Carson? Michelle McCabe? Marcy Spallier?
No.
Liz Esma? Jennifer Barahona? Joe Seibert? Steve Barrettts? Hannah Gail? Andy Grisaffa? Lisa Havy? John Kuhn? Jill Vergara? Karen Whackerman? Cameron Cheniski?
Yes.
Hank Ferentz? Jim Myers? Nick Morablie? Christine Brown? Kelly Cinto? Ken Astorita? Peter Britton? Brooks Sparachino? Storie Tolman? 16 in favor, 18 opposed. The amendment made by Representative McCormick fails, so now we are back to the original motion. Do I have any discussion on the initial motion? I don't think I see anyone online as from the members of the body. Seeing none, I'm going to move to the public now. Wanda, feel free to comment now regarding the motion.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. At the end of 2020, the two-family house that I'd been living in for five years was sold because my landlords were retiring and moving to Florida. They were amazing people who became like family, so much so that at the start of the pandemic, they, on their own, decided to lower my rent by $100 per month to offset a loss of income due to the pandemic. They sold the house to a New Yorker who was new to the area, who claimed he'd be moving in, but instead leased out the first floor. He proceeded to renovate the third-floor attic space above my apartment into an illegal apartment, complete with a kitchen, without any permits. He had been advised that the house was only zoned for two-family. When my lease was about two months from coming to an end, he began showing the illegal apartment to students. He then approached me about including that apartment as part of my lease and subletting, effectively making me a landlord. When I told him that I was not something I would do, he said he'd have to increase my rent by $1,500 per month. He also approached the downstairs tenant about subletting, and they also refused. At that time, I was forced to move to an area that was out of my district for my fourth-grade son. Because inventory was so low, I was forced to take something right away that was completely out of district, and I was also forced to pay rent for two apartments for one month because he would not let me out of my lease to accommodate the fact that I had, I was able to actually find suitable housing. I think that's an example of an egregious increase. And I think that's why we need a fair commission.
Thank you. Can you just state your full name and address for the clerk, please?
Sure. Wanda Cruz, 234 Oakwood Drive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other members from the public would like to speak on the, this current ordinance? Seeing none, we're going to move back to the body. Any other comments regarding this ordinance? Representative Gerber.
Representative Bill Gerber, District 2. I think the question as to whether this applies to prospective renters, Representative McCabe, maybe my fault, I may have mentioned this in a meeting, that it was my opinion that it did not. And the reason I felt confident in that was because Section 7-148(c) talks about rental charge or proposed increase in rental charge, not a proposed rental charge. It, you know, so, you know, they're using the word proposed for the increase, they're not using the, the word proposed for the rental charge. And that's why I think we're pretty safe on that front. Thanks.
Thank you, Representative Gerber. Any other discussion, comments from the body? Representative McCormick?
Representative McCormick, District 2. I did not anticipate coming back up on this issue, as I had sort of moved beyond. But while I can understand and appreciate Mr. Gerber's attempts to interpret the law, the, the ordinance does not restrict the considerations to that particular statute. So with all due respect, I, as an attorney, I believe that this ordinance will absolutely apply not only to increases but initial charges. And at least we're on the record, fighting for making sure that this ordinance is not be, will not be used as a tool against landlords to delay the payment of legitimate rent and to fight a landlord who's just trying to get fair market value for his rental property, his or her rental property. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCormick. Representative McCabe?
So in the Connecticut statute, Chapter 830, Rights and Responsibilities of Landlord and Tenant, they define who these people are. And tenant means the lessy, sublessy, or person entitled under a rental agreement to occupy a dwelling unit or premises. It makes no comment to anybody who isn't actually a tenant. Doesn't say anything about prospective tenants, possible renter, pre-renter, pre-tenant, it says tenant. So if that person doesn't follow under this definition, then they are not included in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCabe. Representative Lambert?
Sorry, Madam Moderator, is that to me?
Yes, I'm sorry. I saw that you were online.
Sorry, I could hardly hear you. Tom Lambert, District 3. Just a comment to make on this as a co-sponsor of this ordinance. Since I'm home, I have the ability to do this. But if one Googles "housing crisis, Connecticut," figures of between 80,000, 90,000 affordable housing units are cited in various news articles as being critical to the state meeting its housing needs. We are in a housing crisis, and this is just one of the elements that the state legislature has passed to help meet the needs of the citizens of the state of Connecticut. Landlords can especially tell you about the value of their properties going up and how it's very, very difficult between renting and/or purchasing a home for young families, you know, myself included, and others of my generation, and all those across the socioeconomic spectrum to be able to afford to live in this state. I've been lucky enough to grow up in Connecticut, to specifically grow up here in Fairfield. And I wish that opportunity for everyone, that they'd be able to do that. But to do that, we need to have controls in place to make things more affordable. And I think that's clear based on the lack of housing that we have. There's a lot of consternation about 830G and the development of, you know, housing developments throughout town and throughout the state. This ordinance that we have, as required by the state for us to pass, allows us the opportunity to control things ourselves, to staff the members of Fair Rent Commission, and to have local control as to how to make things more equitable and more fair for our renters. In a rental, renter relationship where you have a landlord and a tenant, the landlord is the one that has the power in that relationship. And given the fact that we have a documented, well-studied housing crisis in this state with rents that are very unaffordable, I think that, that is a certainty that we have to face, and that is a certainty that we have to address, rather than the prospect of what it might do on occasion to a landlord with a fair rent commission that might decide that the egregious or the unconscionable standard is something less than what it actually is by a majority. I'm going to take the certainty of protecting tenants, the certainty of protecting those who are looking for an affordable place to live or stay in Connecticut, and specifically in Fairfield, over the possibility that something bad might happen to a landlord. So I'm proud to co-sponsor this ordinance. I'm proud to support measures that would make Fairfield more affordable. And I'm proud to support, with my co-sponsors, this particular ordinance to allow local control, to make sure that specifically the renters in Fairfield have fair shake and have a body that they can appeal to in these situations, like what Ms. Cruz described previously.
Thank you, Representative Lambert. Any other members of the body? Representative McCormick?
Briefly, with respect to Representative Lambert's comments, you know, this does have the flavor of, you know, trying to create affordability. And I don't see that that's the purpose in this ordinance. And correct me if I'm wrong, but although the legislature may be going down that path and trying to take from landlords to make things more affordable, that's not the purpose of this ordinance. This ordinance is to protect tenants from egregious increases and egregious rental charges. And to go back to the, to the ordinance itself, I'm going to read directly from the language. "The commission's powers shall include the power to receive complaints, inquiries, and other communications regarding alleged excessive rental charges and alleged violations, including retaliation of Connecticut general statutes," and it goes on to cite these statutes. "The rental charge, as defined here, includes any fee or charge in addition to rent that is imposed or sought to be imposed upon a tenant by a landlord, and includes any charge that is already in effect." So it clearly distinguishes between charges to come and charges that are already in effect. I, I just don't see how you can read the plain language of this ordinance and try to interpret that you're going to grasp from some other state statute that's not even cited here, that it's somehow relevant to this particular ordinance. The language is pretty clear in here, and it does apply to rental charges. So for all those reasons, I'm not going to support the ordinance as written. And I think it's an overstep of government and infringes upon the rights of landlords without putting controls and safety measures in place to make sure it's not abused.
Thank you. Any other members of the public, or members of the body would like to speak? Representative Gao?
Hannah Gail, District 6. So I would actually like to suggest an amendment of adding a time limit for the investigation in order to decrease the possibility that this will be misused. I actually agree with Representative Lambert, and certainly the testimony from the, the woman from the public who, you know, gave that extreme example. You know, it's, it's cautionary. You know, these are very difficult economic times. So saving the supermajority as a protection, I would like to suggest the possibility of adding a reasonable time limit for an investigation, of something like two months, not, that the time limit would not exceed two months. If you add that to the 14 days that is already stipulated, you know, that's two and a half months, you know. And I think any more time than that, you are really infringing on a landlord's rights.
So Representative Gao, you're making an amendment?
I am, I'm so I'm-
Specifically where, in the ordinance, where are you looking to put that?
In the, in Section 4, I need to look at it right here, in Section 4, where it states that there will be the 14 days following, at the, at the conclusion of the investigation and the gathering of data. And I would like to insert after, that, after the phrase "investigation and gathering of data," not to, for, a period not to exceed two months time.
So your amendment is inserting the words for a period not to exceed two months time?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Representative Longo? Discussion on this amendment? Seeing none from the body, is there any public comment on this amendment? Seeing none, back to the body one last time. Okay, so is everyone clear on the amendment? So the amendment that Representative Gao proposed is after investigation, a period not to exceed two months. We're going to take that to a vote. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Do we need a roll call vote? I'm going to ask the clerk to take a roll call vote on the amendment. Ed Bateson? Marty Fury? Melissa Longo? Amy Ruggero? Bill Gerber? Karen McCormick? Cindy Perrom? Jeff Steele? Alex Durrell? Jeff Galdenzi? Tom Lambert?
No.
Sharon Pastili? Laura Carson? Michelle McCabe? Marcy Spallier?
No.
Liz Esma? Jennifer Barahona? Joe Seibert? Steve Barrettts? Hannah Gail? Andy Grisaffa? Lisa Havy? John Kuhn? Jill Vergara? Karen Wackerman? Cameron Cheniski? Hank Ferentz? Jim Myers? Nick Morabli? Christine Brown? Kelly Cinto? Ken Astorita? Peter Britton? Brooke Sparachino? Storie Tolman? Thirteen in favor, twenty opposed. The amendment fails. Thank you, Representative Gail. Moving back to the original motion, any other discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, let's take it to a vote. So we are voting on the original motion to consider upon a Fair Rent Commission ordinance. All those in favor, I'm actually thinking we're going to have to do a roll call vote. Thank you, Betsy. Ed Bateson? Marty Fury? Melissa Longo? Amy Ruggiero? Bill Gerber? Karen McCormick? Cindy Perom? Jeff Steele? Alex Durrell? Jeff Galdenzi? Tom Lambert?
Yes.
Sharon Pistilli? Laura Carson? Michelle McCabe? Marcy Spolier?
Yes.
Liz Esma? Jennifer Barahona? Joe Seibert? Steve Barrettts? Hannah Gail? Andy Grisaffa? Lisa Havy? John Kuhn? Jill Vergara? Karen Wackerman? Cameron Cheniski?
No.
Hank Ferentz? Jim Myers? Nick Morabli? Christine Brown? Kelly Cinto? Ken Astorita? Peter Britton? Brooke Sparachino? Storie Tolman?
Betsy, Jeff Galdenzi, did you not get my vote?
I did not get your vote.
I was, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. It looks like Representative Durrell's on too. Representative Durrell, are you voting on this item? That was Representative Galdenzi that said yes.
Representative Galdenzi said yes. Representative Durrell, put in the chat, yes.
Thank you. Eighteen in favor, seventeen opposed. And that motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations to the committee. Thank you for your work. Moving on to item number eighteen, to consider and act upon amendments to the noise ordinance, Chapter 78 of the Code of the Town of Fairfield, sponsored by Jeff Galdenzi, District 3; Jay Walk, District 5; Andrew Grisaffa, District 6; Jill Vergara, District 7; and Drew Giordiatus, District 9. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Vergara. Sorry. A discussion on this. Representative Vergara?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is August 28, 2023.
So Representative Vergara is making a motion to postpone to our next regular meeting, followed by Representative McCabe. Any discussion on this amendment, Representative Vergara?
Yeah, I think in light of all the emails that we've received and the letters in the past few days, it's become clear that there's a tremendous amount of misinformation going on. And I'd like to take the time to try to educate the public about what the changes really are, what our current ordinance actually says and requires of the Police Department. I think, I don't think that it's responsible to bulldoze this through without having the public understand these changes. I don't know how this misinformation came about. I clearly didn't spell and outline all the changes and why we're doing this. Because for the large majority of these changes, it's required by state law. We're trying to bring this into compliance with the baseline requirements set by the state. That means that the daytime hours that we're adding is required. We're the only town that does not do that, and there's a reason for that. It is required to be compliant. And I don't know how we ever got it passed without doing that. That goes the same for the hours rolling back, the weekend hours from 11:00 p.m. for nighttime hours to 10:00 p.m. There's been misinformation about the yard work hours even, because even that's largely required by the state statute as well. And there's a complete misunderstanding of what the current ordinance is. We did not add "shall" language. That exists now. The police are currently compelled, as soon as there's a complaint, because it needs to be initiated by complaint. A police officer cannot hear a sound and think that it violates something. It needs to be initiated by a complaint. Once that complaint is made, a police officer is required by our town ordinance to take a decibel level reading, which would be taken at the emitter, at the receptor's property. So the emitter technically doesn't even know. It addresses the reason why I need to make this postponement, and I will set out to inform everybody about all these misconceptions and misinformation. But I was hoping to be able to outline at least some of this, because it is really, really concerning that our police don't understand what the current requirements are.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Do I have any other discussion regarding Representative Vergara's motion to postpone to the next regular meeting date certain of August 28? Representative Bateson?
I'm sorry, I don't agree at all. I don't see what a postponement's going to do. I mean, quite frankly, if there's anybody, I think, in this room or in this community that understands more than anybody what this ordinance is, it's the Police Department. They're the ones that are going to be charged with enforcing it. And obviously, they've taken a look at it. And obviously, they've made a decision or given an opinion on how they feel about it, along with the Police Commission. That information is very relevant to me. And I don't think how we're, I don't see what a postponement is going to do to change somebody's opinion or how you're going to lobby more support for this. I disagree with the postponement. Quite frankly, I would ask you to withdraw the, this altogether. I mean, I just, what I read this past week from the Police Commission and the union, I mean, guys, it's becoming evident to me that it's just, we're going down the wrong road here. So a postponement isn't going to do anything but prolong the agony on this thing. And I don't see, I don't see where we're going to go from here. So I would not entertain a postponement. And quite frankly, I'd ask Representative Vergara to withdraw it entirely.
Representative Steele?
Jeff Steele, Representative, District 2. Yeah, I'm a little shocked as well. Like, I thought this had been worked on for like two years. I thought you'd been researching it and beginning it.
A point of information. Representative Vergara, do you want to go up, go up to the microphone?
No, that's okay. I mean, I still have the mic right now.
She has a point of information.
First of all, the RTM doesn't work with committees on these ordinances. A resident brought me in who had been working with one of your colleagues. It was Representative Perugini who had worked with the Police Department for a couple of years. And then, so that that work didn't go to waste, even though I didn't really want to work on this noise ordinance, I did so that wouldn't, that work that was put into it wouldn't go to waste. I did some research, and I met with the police for a year.
Thank you.
Just for the record, too, our caucus was asked to jointly be part of this on January 23 of 2023. We weren't asked a year ago, or however long you started looking at this. And generally, for ordinances like this and changing of legislation, which impacts the town potentially permanently, and it impacts 100 people, 100% of the population, that should be done jointly. The reason the Republican caucus didn't join in that is we didn't support it. We didn't support the changes that we heard about as of January 23. So now we've been debating, discussing, and there's been a lot of discussion. We've brought out all the experts, we've talked to the police, we've heard from the Police Commission, we've even heard from the Police Union. We've heard from former Police Chief Peck. I think it's a big misstatement to say that you and the cosponsors, and even this body, knows more about enforcing than the police themselves. I think that's almost a borderline absurd comment. I'm not saying you haven't done a lot of work. In fact, tonight, I was going to commend you for your work. But what else needs to happen? And I think to disqualify the police on how to enforce and make this body in charge of enforcing and how to enforce, it's ludicrous. They are the ones that do this as a career, and we're going to come in and say, do it this way. So I just think it's, I think we're ready to talk about it and vote on it now.
Representative Vergara, do you want to respond, since that was directly to you? Okay, okay. All right, Representative Pistilli?
Sharon Pistilli, District 3. Madam Moderator, through you to Representative Vergara. Is the, does law enforcement, in this case, where is, the RTM actually drafts the ordinance. Once the ordinance is drafted, then law enforcement enforces the law, because it becomes a law, correct? Can you give me a letter? It does. It's in direct response to Representative Steele's comment. Yeah, because his reason for postponement is because the police says it's, that they can't enforce the law, but the RTM makes the law. The police enforces the law. And so I'm asking Representative Vergara, excuse me, excuse me. I am asking Representative Vergara, as an attorney and the person who drafted this,
Representative Pistilli?
To comment. Thank you.
I'm not sure that that's regarding the timeline, unfortunately. So the reason for the timeline is, Representative Pistilli? Excuse me, Representative Longo, you do not have the floor? Thank you, thank you. We'll move on to the next person. Would someone like to comment? Representative, I'm sorry. Marabella, thank you.
Wow, here we go. Nick Morabli, District 8. Yeah, I disagree to postpone this. I don't think we should drag this out any longer. I think the information is out there. I think it's, I believe the police do understand this. I mean, we have spoken to the chiefs, ex-chiefs of police, the police union. We have a letter here from the police union and the Police Commission. I think they all are fully aware of what we're proposing here. And I don't think postponement is appropriate.
Thank you. Any other members of the body? Representative Astorita?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ken Astorita, District 10. I am against postponing it at this point. I don't think there's any additional information that is going to change anybody's mind at this point. And let me tell you where I'm, where I'm coming from on this. And first, I do want to thank Representative Vergara for her work. I recognize that you've put a lot of time and effort into this, and I do really appreciate it. Your effort is to try to make the town better, and you should be commended for that. So, so I do thank you. From the very beginning, this for me has been the most troubling issue that I've had to deal with since I joined the RTM a couple of years ago. I, for one, am a person who, you know, two or three times over the course of my lifetime, I've called the police because of various, you know, noise violations, like Kid Rock at 2:00 in the morning on a Tuesday night, but that's for another time. So I really have gone back and forth, trying to think what's in the best interests of the town here. And from the very beginning, what I had a problem with was the plainly audible standard. I couldn't get my mind around-
I'm sorry, Representative Astorita, is this regarding the?
Well, I'm telling you, I'm telling you why I don't think I should, we should postpone it. So it had to do with the plainly audible standard, and I couldn't get my arms around fully understanding it. And as I kept thinking about it, it seemed to me that it's something that is, it is too generic, something that could be easily misconstrued by a lot of different people. And reading the things that the various representatives from the Police Union and the Police Chiefs really solidified it in my mind. This is, this is not the way we should go as a town ordinance. And I think sometimes miss, what people think is misinformation can also be confusion. And when something like this is creating this much confusion, that tells me that perhaps isn't the way we, where we should go. So I'm voting no on postponement, and I'll also be voting no on the resolution, the ordinance itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Astorita. Representative Esma?
Thank you, Liz Esma, District 4. I want to thank Representative Astorita for what I was going to say. There is too much confusion to vote on this. I'm reading emails from people who are absolutely misstating things, clearly not within agenda. They simply don't understand the ordinance, or perhaps they have received information from somewhere else. That is why I support postponing this, so thank you for that. One of the reasons the ordinance is necessary is an enforcement issue. So, you know, we make the laws, the police enforce them. They don't get to say they won't do it. I don't get to say what laws I won't obey. So we need to straighten that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Esma. Representative McCabe, did you have your hand up earlier?
Representative McCabe, District 4. I want to say actually that Representative Astorita first, thank you very much for your comments. And it's actually persuaded me to vote in favor of postponement, because I think it would be great to be able to continue the discussion with Representative Astorita, because I think for someone that has actually made use of the noise ordinance, to be able to take his opinion into account would be really important. Thank you.
Representative McCormick?
Representative McCormick, District 2. We have spent an exorbitant amount of time listening to experts, listening to all sorts of opinions, reading emails from residents, trying to determine how widespread a problem this is, how widespread a solution we need. And I just think to get all the way here tonight, to be told that I think we need to postpone is just, it's unfair to everybody involved. I mean, we've- I mean, we've had, you've been working on the ordinance for a year. We've been talking about it now for at least two full meetings. The last one, which went on for the entire meeting, was four hours. I think we talked about the noise ordinance for about an hour and a half. Enough. Let's call it to a vote, either it passes or it doesn't, and move on to something else, or go back to the drawing board and make the changes that need to be made to make it more palatable, so that the entire town, which is going to be subject to this, can support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Myers.
Jim Myers, District 8. I think using confusion that we're reading from residents' emails as an excuse for postponing is setting a bad precedent. I mean, there were probably confusing emails before last Monday, and we didn't postpone it last Monday. So why all of a sudden this week are the emails that are coming in from our residents confusing? And I certainly didn't think that the communications from the police union, the police commissioner, and certainly not Commissioner Calamaris last week were confusing at all. I mean, those could not have been clear. So, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm calling it like I see it here, but I just don't think we like what we read this week, and we're now calling it confusion. So I'm personally against this postponement. I gave up personal obligations, things I could be doing outside of this meeting. I'm here to vote on this ordinance, and I implore all of us to vote on it.
Thank you, Representative Longo.
Hi, Melissa Longo, District 1. I would also like to say that I will be voting no on postponing this, and just, we've had enough of time, enough of emails, and especially after hearing Chief Calamaris last week say that this would handcuff the police department, just by the way that this is written, as he was sitting here in our presence, I feel like that should be enough for all of us. And then, to hear also from the police commission, also to hear from the police union, and also to know that this has been worked on for a very long time by Representative Vergara, who I think, as we know at this point, puts in a whole lot of effort and time, and she's very detailed. And I don't think that what she meant to say in that ordinance was confusing. I think what she meant for it to say was exactly where we stand today. And to hear that the police are misinterpreting it, or that to call that misinformation, that they're making these emails public to us as a body, I just don't see how you can't see the writing on the wall, which is, "The police don't want this." Very clear. And for us as a body to sit here, to me, that's just outright disrespectful. And I don't understand how anybody could see it any other way. We've heard from enough of people, we've heard from several residents more than once, and nothing has changed, nothing's going to change. And we are here to vote tonight, so please, let's put this to bed. And we have so many other issues in this town that this body could be focusing on right now, and we're not, because this is frankly, at this point, a hindrance. We need to vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Representative Vergara.
I'm concerned with engaging with the public, and Representative Iakono had suggested that we hold a public forum, and I think that she was right. And it is clear that people writing in to us don't have a full understanding of these changes. And I do think it's irresponsible to push this through without our community fully understanding it. I think it's better to try to get to consensus, not just with the public, but also with each other. I do think that some of the members in this body don't fully understand that there are requirements that have to be made if we have a local noise ordinance. 70% of these changes are necessary because the ordinance we have right now is noncompliant. So I think that that needs, I think that needs to be spelled out to everybody.
Thank you, Representative Gale.
Hannah Gale, District 6. I am afraid that this is just one of those things that's just a terrible Pandora's box. And at the beginning, when this ordinance came up, we talked about it, you know, potentially being used or having a very negative effect on neighbor relations. And just discussing it is having that. You know, everybody in town has their own story. We heard from the gentleman who was complaining about pep rallies. You know, everyone's complaining, this is just unfortunately really ripping our town apart. And I just really think it needs to go to bed right now, because there wasn't a problem before. There may have been individual people who had negative experiences, and I'm sorry for that, especially people in the beach area who didn't know what they were getting into. But at this point in time, if we keep it going, it's just going to get worse. And so I really do not think we should extend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gale. Okay, Representative Vergara would like to call the question. Does that? Okay, and I also just would like to say that I just am for postponing it. I recall hearing members of the Republican leadership say how long it takes to form an ordinance. It doesn't take just a few months or a short time. It takes a lot of changes. And we need to listen to the public, and we need to listen and work on those changes. So I will be voting for this postponement. Members of the public, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion to postpone? Yes, you can come over to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucas Schollhammer. I live at 685 Fairfield Beach Road in the beach area, as is made pretty clear. My only thought is that this whole discussion is pretty disgusting. The idea that, hey, there's a problem, it's tearing us apart, so let's not address it, is ridiculous. I think much of the opposition that was sowing the confusion didn't necessarily accurately portray the revision. You know, this was a revision that's been negotiated by both parties in broad daylight for three to four months, you know, with police consultation along the way, with meaningful concessions made by both sides. This feels a little bit like, I don't know, this is pretty frustrating. At the end of the day, the current ordinance is illegal, so whether this passes or not, if it passes, it survives, if it doesn't pass, we maintain an illegal ordinance. And that is something, you all cannot unknow that fact. For the record, that is CT General Statute 22A-73. Quote, "Any such municipal noise control ordinance shall be at least as stringent as any state noise control plan." Should that ever need to be brought up in a deposition or in court of record, it is now on the record. You cannot unknow the fact that regardless of when the timing plays out, if the current ordinance stays in place, you're maintaining an illegal policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to speak regarding the postponement of this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll go back to the body. Any members of the body? Do I hear someone online? If you want to speak, you need to put it in the chat, because we can't see everyone online. Is there someone in the chat? There's no one in the chat. Okay, Representative Gerber.
Hi, Bill Gerber, District 2. I'm going to vote to postpone. Even the letter that I got from the police union makes me believe we need to have discussions with them. I mean, if you read that letter, they make it very clear, they don't want to carry noise meters, and they don't want to train how to use the noise meters, because they're busy. But that really, what that really means is they will not enforce the ordinance currently on the books. And if they can't enforce our ordinance currently on the books, when we pass that, that means that any ordinance this body passes, that they might decide just not to enforce it. And I think we need to amend this ordinance, the way we're amending it now to bring it in compliance with state regulations, is something we actually have to do. But we also need to talk to the police and figure out a way around this, because if they won't enforce the noise ordinance that we passed on this body in 2017, led by Republicans, I may add, and we all supported it, it was unanimously approved, and it relies on decibel meters. And that has been, you know, ignored. There may be good reasons for it, but that's what the state statute requires. It requires using decibel meters. So there wouldn't be a plainly audible standard in this amendment if the police were using the decibel meters. So we're sort of in a catch-22 situation. I think it really would help to have another sit-down with them and ask them how we get around this. And that's going to require some frank discussions. And I don't think, as far as I know, we've never had a frank discussion with the police as to what it means to just completely ignore and make it impossible to enforce something that this body passes, that some people on both sides of the aisle were on this body when we passed it. How do you feel about that? You're okay with that? Well, then what else will not be, you know, enforced? And I understand there might be reasons for it, but I think we need to have those discussions. Thanks.
Thank you. Representative Durrell, I believe, online, I saw had a question.
No, Madam Moderator, I did not.
Okay, sorry. Any other members of the body on this motion to postpone? Seeing none, we're going to vote, all those in favor, oh, we're going to do a roll call vote. Ed Bateson? Marty Fury? Melissa Longo? Amy Ruggero? Bill Gerber? Karen McCormick? Cindy Perham? Jeff Steele? Alex Durrell?
No.
Jeff Galdenzi? Jeff Galdenzi? Tom Lambert?
I think he's having some difficulty with his audio.
Tom Lambert?
I'm a yes.
Thank you. Sharon Pistilli? Laura Carson? Michelle McCabe? Marcy Spolier?
Yes.
Liz Zesma? Jennifer Barahona? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Joe Seibert? Steve Barrettts? Hannah Gale? Angie Grifaffa? Lisa Heavy? John Keun? Jill Vergara? Karen Wacherman? Cameron Cheniski?
No.
Hank Ferens? Jim Myers? Nick Marably? Christine Brown? Kelly Sinto? Ken Astorita? Peter Britton? Brooke Sparachino? Storie Tullman?
Did you get Representative Galdenzi? He did put it in the chat.
Did he put it in the chat?
I believe he's having audio difficulty.
Can you bring up the chat?
Representative Galdenzi is a yes.
Motion to postpone, 18 in favor, 17 opposed. Thank you. That motion passes. That means we will be revisiting this at our August regular meeting. Moving on, we had an item on our supplemental, on our supplemental warning. Thankfully, the registrars have agreed on that, and so we do not need to vote on that item. So I reach out to them, and I say, "Thank you for coming to consensus on that, so that you save us some time in this long night." Moving on, to consider and act upon any other matters presented to said meeting, and which may be properly acted upon under the rules of the representative town meeting. I do have several announcements and personal privileges. First, Representative Zesma.
Thank you, Liz Zesma, District 4. So on behalf of myself, my caucus, and I hope the entire body, I just wanted to thank Jerry Spino for his many years of amazing work. I don't know if he's still here, but he'll be greatly missed, and I do appreciate the obvious expertise of his crew. Anyway.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Steele.
Jeff Steele, District 2. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for the moment of personal privilege. I was not at the last meeting, so I was not present when Representative, then Representative Iakono submitted her resignation, so I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank her for her years of service to the town, to this body. She served 10 years on this body, three or four years as moderator, as caucus leader, as committee leader. She was on the Board of Ed for five years, chairman of the Board of Ed. She's done a great service to this town and to this body. She's been a real leader. I was moderator years ago when she joined, and we're happy she stayed on for all the years she did. Hopefully, maybe she's listening, but thank you. And I think we can all agree, whether or not we agree with the politics, I think we can all agree that she has high energy, she's passionate, she knows the town inside and out, she knows the body inside and out. And I really have appreciated her companionship, her leadership, and her knowledge. So, thank you, Pam.
Ed Bateson, District 1. I want to just echo what Jeff said. I would have been here last month. I was taken aback by what happened. I'm happy for Pam, and for those of you that don't know her or didn't have the pleasure of working with her over the years, I mean, I can remember years ago when she was on the Board of Education, you know, we would have a proposed cut, and she'd be sitting in those chairs, just scowling at us. Her passion for what she has been tasked has always been exemplary. She was just ferocious, tenacious, and she always truly represented what was before her. And I always respected her for that. I still respect her. And I, quite frankly, I think it's just going to be a great asset to the first select woman's office, because her depth of knowledge of everything that goes on in town. And I'm going to miss her as a resource on this body, and I know a lot of us are. And I wish her the best of luck.
Thank you. I do have another announcement. I wanted to just remind everybody that there is an age
I wanted to just remind everybody that there is an age-friendly survey that's being conducted by the town. It's through June 30. They've asked us just to promote it. It's built upon by AARP framework and approaches, and the more input that they get, the better. And if you, I believe, it was forwarded to the caucus leaders so they can forward that out. Also, you can just go to the town website and Google "age-friendly survey," and I believe that'll pop up. And then just one more item. I just wanted to remind everybody that just for good order, it's best if, especially given that we just postponed an item of lots of information, right? So I just wanted, for good order, to remind you that any questions or concerns that you have should be addressed through the moderator. So if you do have questions for the police, if you have questions for anybody in regards to that, that should go through our moderator, Representative McDermott, and then he can forward that out to the correct people and get the correct responses, and then that can correctly go into our material so that we have it all in good form. So I do appreciate that, if we could do that from here on out, as we should be all along. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, no. Motion to adjourn? Oh, question. I'm sorry, Representative Brown.
Representative Brown, District 9. This question is for, through you, Madam Moderator, to the clerk. Betsy, could you just clarify for us the vote on the Fair Rent Commission motion?
19 in favor, 16 opposed. Thank you. There's 35 present. Any other business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Representative McCabe, seconded by Representative Pastilli. Thank you, everybody. See you in August. There's no July meeting, so we'll see you in August. Thank you.